Anyway, we wish you wasn't here.
Councilmember Barry.
Present.
Councilmember Clay.
Present.
Councilmember Robinson.
Present.
Councilmember Seaman.
Present.
Councilmember Stepper. Councilmember Wright.
Okay, um, council comments. Colleen?
Um, I actually have some, uh, some sad news. Um, one of my residents passed away this, this past week and, and she's been a friend to us since we moved into the neighborhood. Her name is, um, Ella Hill and, um, she lived across the street from me until, um, just recently. And, um, I'm, I'm sad to see her go and I know all the, all the kids in the neighborhood are sad to see her go. Uh, she, um, she was the, our, our, our person in the, in the neighborhood who had the scooter and the wheelchair that would, uh, head over to the, to the shoppers and going down the street and everyone would be looking out for her and she always invited all the kids over to her neighborhood because she had the, the best manicured lawn and it was great to play in and she would always welcome them and, and let them ride their bicycles up and down her scooter ramp and, um, and she, she will be, she will be missed. I'm sorry to see her go. Um, and the other, uh, comment that I wanted to make is that, um, before we start the priority session tonight, it would be, I think it would be nice to, um, come back to our discussion that we had last week about the, what the budget document is going to look like. I think that's related to, um, our council priorities and, um, to, to work to come to some agreement about, um, setting goals for our departments before we do the priorities. I'd like to, to recommend that we talk about this, that we consider, uh, starting slow with maybe one area per department where we, um, do a, a, a goal-based, um, goal-based, do measures essentially based on our goals. So, um, we might look at what's happening just with the, um, with the tree program and public works, um, with the, the youth activities in, um, in recreation department, maybe just code enforcement in HCD, but, uh, small areas that we could, um, that we could start with where we, we feel like we have a, a fair amount of measures now that we could use without having to try to create a lot of, of new measures and a, a lot of onerous accounting. Um, I think that our, our residents would like to see that. They would like to see us have some, some measure of, of whether or not we're being successful in, in attaining our, our goals and our priorities. Um, so that's, that's what I'd like to say.
Anybody else?
Um. I was going to suggest that, yes, it would be good to roll it into this discussion and my assumption is that we're not going to finish this discussion this evening and I've put, put it on the agenda for February 11th and we've got an hour at the end of that meeting to do it. So maybe if we can roll it in there, that would be good, um, because I agree we need to address it. Um, and what I'd like to do this evening is, uh, try and get through what we need to do by 9:30. I'm, uh, I'm under the weather and, uh, I'm going to leave at 9:30 and I want, and I want to go adjourned at that point. So if we can, uh, keep that in mind as we go, I think, uh, we'll be happy not to wear ourselves out, given that this is our second meeting of the week. I know staff will be happy to, uh, be able to get home at a more decent hour than it could be. So keep your eye on the clock for 9:30. Um, I wanted to let people know that I got a copy this week of a report of the task force on traffic calming and pedestrian friendliness that the city of Baltimore did and, uh, I can, uh, make copies of that if people are interested and, uh, get them into your box. And I just wanted to give a quick update on the, uh, process that's going forward with the Maryland Municipal League Legislative Committee that I'm a member of. Uh, just wanted to let you know the types of bills that have been submitted in Annapolis and that the committee has been asked to take a position on some of these, uh, we might want to take a position on or, uh, contact some folks about them. And I was just going to give you a, a sense of a couple of the highlights. Uh, we've gone through about, I don't know, 20 or 30 bills so far and I think this, the next meeting on Wednesday, it's going to be more than that many just in the one meeting. But, uh, there's a bill in to, uh, let municipalities do a hotel motel tax separate from the counties. Uh, there's a bill in to repeal the new homestead property tax credit law that, uh, requires people to be proactive in saying that they live in their houses. Uh, the committee took a position of opposing that. Um, there's a bill in to change program open space so that once you've acquired your goal, you can use more of the money for, uh, maintenance and dev- and development of the existing parks rather than acquisition. I think that present point is, is it 50%? And they want to take it to 75% or 100% once you kind of declare that you've gotten there. Um, there's a bill to prohibit anybody except, uh, police departments from possessing tasers. Um, there's a bill to change the number of lifeguards required at a pool which might affect some projects that we're working on that might involve a pool. Um, the current law is that you have to have one lifeguard for every 50 people in the pool. The law is to change it to one for every 25. Um, there's a bill in to give school crossing guards the authority to direct traffic. It sounds like they don't technically have that now and this would kind of put more teeth in their ability to tell cars to stop or divert or whatever it is that they're doing. Um, and then there's a bill in to modify the open meetings law to require that no votes can be taken in any closed session. Just thought I'd let you know the kinds of bills that are going in and that the legislative committee takes position on and if anybody is interested in any of those and wants more detail, I have the bills and if there's anything that we want to take a position on, we could discuss that. And if nobody has anything else, I'll move on to the, uh, agenda scheduling update. Um, I think I already mentioned that we have that time on the, uh, 11th and the next meeting on Monday, the 4th is going to be devoted to affordable housing issues and, uh, former Mayor Porter will be back and discussing a few items and, uh, it's pretty much an affordable housing evening on Monday. Are there any public comments? Now's your chance to make any comments tonight.
About priority.
Anything you want to talk about, absolutely anything. Because this is a work session discussion, so.
Good evening. My name is Larry Silverman. I reside at 7308 Birch Avenue. After many years, I, I've got a written statement which I've left at your desk. Uh, I, I want to talk to you tonight about, uh, priorities in the environmental area and the purpose of my statement is to suggest that the highest, uh, the top environmental priority for Tacoma Park should be storm water management. And there are three reasons for that. First of all, unlike many other environmental issues, you have a legal obligation here. You own your stormwater sewers, your, your drain pipes, you run the system. If there's, I don't know what your status of your permit is, but if you have a permit, it's, you own it, you're the permit holder. Uh, based on the quality of the system you have now, I think you're vulnerable to, uh, lawsuit under Clean Water Act. So it's, you, it's a legal obligation. Every, there are many things that are nice to do, this is something you have to do and there's really no getting around it. Second, uh, stormwater, uh, is a huge impact on our local environment. Stormwater drives trash into streams and brings oils, chemicals and other pollutants into the streams, but its great, greatest impact derives from the volume and pressure of the flow. Storm drains that carry water from impervious surfaces throughout the city act like fire hoses, scouring stream banks and bottoms, destroying the physical integrity of the streams, bringing down trees and sending vast quantities of sediment into the Anacostia River, the Potomac and the Chesapeake Bay. Uh, if you walk Sligo Creek, sometimes you'll see exposed sewer lines. Those sewer lines were not originally exposed, they were four to six feet under. All that sediment that was around those lines is washed off into the Chesapeake Bay. Uh, this is a vast impact and in fact, the Tacoma branch of Sligo Creek, which is fed by, uh, by DC, Prince George's County, Montgomery County and Tacoma Park is the trashiest, uh, body of water, trashiest, uh, attributable to the Anacostia River in the whole system by twice. If you go to Watts Branch, there's twice as much trash in, in the Tacoma branch, which we all contribute to, as any other and the Anacostia River is probably the trashiest river in the Chesapeake Bay system. So here we are in the epicenter of a severe, visible, obvious environmental problem and, and each of us could say, well, what have we done about it? And perhaps the more important question is, is what should we do about it? Uh, I, the, a third reason, uh, for making this a high priority is that there is a great risk of public health and safety. We're entering a period of, of climate change, that means droughts and floods. Some of the flood maps that we relied on, uh, the experience that we relied on are no longer reliable. Uh, you can't deal with, uh, with, uh, flood management and loss prevention without having an effective and thoughtful stormwater management program. It's not just an environmental program, it's a public safety program. And another, uh, uh, another factor that makes, making things worse is there's a lot of landfill development. Uh, there's, it, the whole situation, we're, we're making the situation worse physically and, and the, the environment, the climate is going to make it worse too. It's a bad combination. So you've got to deal with it. Uh, I hope I can go on, not, I'll try to be quick.
Sure.
All right. The question is, well, what do you do about it? Well, I, I've, uh, listed, I've sort of developed a quick program here, suggested a quick program involving inventory, your capital assets, identifying problem areas, identifying and quantifying city impacts on streams and identifying, quantifying, quantifying impacts of upstream users on Tacoma streams. This is, uh, this is a group, this is a regional problem. I think you need to establish goals in terms of management practices, reduction in impervious services, stream restoration projects, changes in building and road codes, increases in tree canopy, increasing green roofs, et cetera. And you should also establish some goals in terms of water quality. How, how will our stream improve if we do these things? Uh, you need to create a liaison with the other jurisdictions because you can't solve this by yourselves and I, I participate in a lot of regional meetings. I don't see Tacoma Park represented very often. Uh, public education and outreach in many languages is critical, particularly for this trash issue because, uh, stormwater is something we all contribute to and we all have some control over. Uh, there may be necessary to pass some ordinances leading to stream improvement and, and you need to identify staffing and financial needs for an effective program. And the Maryland Municipal League, other organizations can help you. There are a lot of people to help you if you want to help. Uh, funding, now then I'll conclude. Uh, I think you need to take a look at your stormwater budget, what your stormwater fund is bringing in, how you're using it, uh, take a look at what you need to, for a really good program. Uh, there are resources available, the, the green fund, the legislature just passed a $50 million green fund. They're open to, uh, to suggestions to how to spend it. That's an annual fund, that's something if you have good projects, uh, I would be there in the legislature talking about. Uh, there's the Chesapeake Bay Fund that nonprofit organizations get, maybe you can get funding for a planning program. You need to look at your rate structures, you need to think about a rate based on imperviousness and other indicators of problems. Uh, and you should also sort of, I think, and, and these kind of things because no one likes to pay fees and taxes. If you increase the fee by this much and you do this much, what benefit will you get? And if you cut it by this much, what, what will you lose? And let, present it to the voters and see. It's easy to be serious about, about, uh, global warming and other things where it's, you don't have direct responsibility, you have an indirect and a port responsibility, but it's not really in your backyard. But the question to call park is, are we, are people in Tacoma Park willing to, to stand up, willing to do what they're responsible for doing, which is managing stormwater? I, I was at a meeting, uh, talking to someone from the trucking industry recently about stormwater, they had big problems there and, and they said, oh, where are you from? I said, I'm from Tacoma Park and they said, oh, you must have a great stormwater program. And I said, I wish that were true, but I don't think it is. But it should be true because, uh, people look to us as leaders in these areas and we should not be in the mediocre group, we should be in the excellent group. And I mean no criticism of the staff, which I have great admiration for. I do mean criticism of the council, which I also respect. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your comments.
My name is Barbara Beeler. Ethan Allen, Atman. Uh, Mr. Mayor, please take care of yourself. I've been fighting the cold for a month and it's still winning, so, um, get some rest, take some antibiotics. Um, I have submitted to council, hopefully you've received, uh, three priority areas that I'd like for you to, to think about and I've deep, done these in some detail, sort of where to go with, um, environment, sustainable issues. I've encouraged, uh, for you to consider a Friends of Parks program which would very much complement the passage of the Recreation Committee, but it would serve as a non-profit fundraising component which would allow, um, a lot of additional funds to flow from other sources into our wonderful parks. And then I've done one on aging in place. Uh, Councilmember Clay has responded to that and we've sort of begun a dialogue. I've sent her some information and if anybody wants to have more conversations with that, I'm willing to, um, work with whomever on staff and in the community. I have three small areas which I would like to add to your priorities. Speed enforcement on Ethan Allen, it's nonexistent. Um, I've been here a year. The only, I've seen police cars there when you mandated the, we do the seatbelt checks. We actually got quite a lot of coverage there. They were checking for seatbelts, not speeding. I've seen one police car in a year stop somebody for speeding. When I've asked, uh, police officers, you know, informally, what's the deal? Why aren't we doing it? The response is, well, if we drive down Ethan Allen, then the people in front of us will go slow, but, you know, if we're not there, they're going to speed. Um, surely there are creative options beyond just delegating the, uh, police cars to go down the street. Um, in fact, tonight, you may have not seen, but on ABC News, the, uh, the, um, police, Chief of Police from Montgomery County was in-depth interviewed about, uh, the, uh, speed enforcement cameras that are being put up throughout the county. Uh, there's a tremendous demand. Everybody is seeing that these really are working and really, really slowing down speeders. I think Ethan Allen would be a place, uh, for the council to consider installing. Of course, this has budget implications. Um, I will tell you that I have seen everybody from Tacoma Park's police cars, you know, semis, every means of, of public transportation. I have seen the ambulances when they return from dropping off at Washington Adventist. Um, they more often than not run the stop line, stoplight at, at Jackson. They're there, everybody's bailing down there 50 miles an hour. I've almost been hit three times and I, these are not, you know, a block away something happened, but really close, really, you know, high adrenaline events. I'm not the only one. So I ask you to take a serious look at that and I do think that maybe the application of the cameras makes more sense than trying to put police presence there. I know, um, Mr. Mayor, that you had, uh, asked, uh, the police to enforce this and with the issue, well, there's no place to stop anybody. There are, you could pull people off at the bottom of the hill as it gets near to New Hampshire, there's some widening of the road, more of a shoulder and you can definitely, everybody else is using the Marthoma parking, uh, area, so the police could definitely take advantage of that too. The second item I would like to see is for the council to make a, a simple commitment that all future retrofitting or construction and/or new construction in Tacoma Park in any of the public buildings be, uh, at a minimum silver lead, um, guidelines that, I, I think that the, the inspirations we got from Gaithersburg last week, if they can do it, we can do it too. It's just making the priority, making that important. I know we've got public works coming up for a retrofit renovation and I would really, really hope that we can find ways to, to move that into a silver leap. The final area is, um, I would like to see somebody, I don't even know, we don't have a Department of Agriculture within Tacoma Park, but maybe we should because one of the things in, in, uh, in reducing your carbon footprint is to eat locally. We have a wonderful farmer's market. I've noticed that the co-op is featuring more locally grown produce. This is good. Um, why not community gardens? We have a number of spaces that I believe might be, um, appropriate for establishing community gardens. Um, and I, I think that Doug Duncan has a, the University of Maryland greenhouse that he is, uh, removing for the renovations he's doing in College Park and I'd love to see that come to Tacoma Park. I don't know whether we put it up, that's part of what might happen at the Adventist property or wherever, but I'd love to see that greenhouse here. Um, and it's, that would be recycling. Okay, thanks for your attention.
Thank you.
Bruce?
Yes?
I just want to make the comment that, um, I spoke to the Recreation Director yesterday about the aging in place interest and, uh, and she was interested in that, so, so we'll connect up with you with the, uh, Rec Director and the, and the senior, the new senior coordinator.
Any other public comments? Okay, um, City Manager, have any updates? Then we will move on to our work session, which is identification of our priorities and what I'd like to do is ask the City Manager to start off with a little update on, uh, some of the staff's identification of issues that came out of the survey.
And I apologize to the council for not getting this out to you earlier. Um, since we received the survey results last month, obviously we've all spent a lot of time as a staff looking through them and trying to figure out, um, kind of either what we could do or what we should suggest to the council in response to certain, uh, areas where our residents expressed some concern or desire for more service. Attached to your agenda item are, is some information and some thoughts that we had about three specific areas. One was community safety, sustainability and communications and outreach. Um, I'll be, well, we'll try to be very brief because obviously this is a, your evening to talk about priorities, um, not really our night for discussion, but I'd like to just start with community safety and then Suzanne is going to talk a little bit about communications and outreach. Um, in looking through the survey results, it was very clear that there was a serious concern in the community about crime. Um, 62% of the survey respondents reported crime as at least a moderate problem, uh, in their neighborhood. And I think in reading the answers to the open-ended questions, it was very clear that residents also wanted to have more police visibility. So Chief Rakuci and I talked and he also talked to his staff and what I'd like to just, uh, very briefly share with you this evening is kind of where we're headed, um, in the police department. Um, I think as the council knows, since Chief Rakuci joined us last February, um, there's been a lot of organizational restructuring in the police department and some new programs for re-institution of old programs that have lagged for a number of years. Uh, just very briefly, those include the, um, creation of the tactical enforcement unit, which is a clean clothes unit that has focused on robbery, burglary, thefts and basically is very flexible in terms of responding to community problems as they have arisen. Um, Chief Rakuci has reinstituted the bicycle patrol program, the partners on patrol with the Metropolitan Police Department, um, an increase in walking patrols. As needed, we have, uh, implemented specialized robbery and burglary details, particularly around the crossroads area and near the metro, but in other areas as the circumstances have dictated. And with this council's, uh, blessing, we have hired a, a crime analyst and there's been an enhanced effort to share information with our neighboring law enforcement jurisdictions. Um, well, I think we've made a lot of progress. It's also very clear that our residents, uh, would like to see us do some additional things. And what I wanted to share with the council and with the community this evening is, um, Chief Rakuci's plans relative to the patrol division. Um, in looking at the organizational structure, what Chief Rakuci and his staff really took into account, I think is the desire of the residents, um, to see different types of patrolling, um, as well as enhanced visibility. I would share that the model that I'm about to talk about, uh, is predicated on the department remaining at full strength, which is obviously something we've been working very diligently towards in our recruitment efforts. Um, I think some of the council is aware, we do have four patrol teams, um, of six officers. There is one sergeant, two corporals and three officers. Assuming that we remain at full strength, um, on each of those patrol shifts, uh, what Chief Rakuci plans to implement is a traffic team consisting of two officers, um, a specialized bike patrol team of two officers and there would be one officer that would basically be sort of in a flexible capacity to be assigned in various temporary capacities. Um, just a little bit more about, um, I guess each of those. The traffic team, I think as it somewhat suggests, uh, would be focused on traffic enforcement, um, targeting known problem areas as well as also responding to concerns and feedback we get from our residents. This would also be the unit that would focus on, um, DUI or DWI enforcement and would also deal with, um, collision investigations, traffic and accident investigations. Um, the bike patrol team, what we really want to focus on in particular is some of the business areas, Old Town to Tacoma Junction, the crossroads. Um, part of that unit would also be involved as sort of a business liaison officer, meeting and providing partnerships with our area of businesses and also filling in for the patrol team if there's, um, someone who's off duty for whatever reason. Um, as I mentioned, one of Chief Rakuci's concepts was also to have a kind of a temporary duty assignment. One of the problems that you sometimes see in smaller police departments is people can feel sort of like they're pigeonholed and unless someone leaves, there's really not an opportunity for someone to maybe come in and out of criminal investigations. Um, and I think throughout my career, because I've always generally worked in smaller cities, sometimes what you'll do is you'll lose someone, not necessarily because of salary or benefits, but for the opportunity to do something different and to expand their professional knowledge. Um, this temporary duty assignment would be based on, um, certainly officer interest, it would be voluntarily, voluntary and based on their performance, but Chief Rakuci would like to explore giving officers the ability, um, provided we have adequate staffing, to maybe do a temporary rotation through CID to maybe participate in some of the county specialized units. Um, I think in looking at this and I, I certainly support Chief Rakuci and his staff in making this move, if we believe we'll be able to provide a higher level of service to our residents, provide the visibility that our residents are clearly calling for based on the survey results, have a better trained force, um, and I think we'll also have improved morale. I think it will offer some officers, um, some opportunity to do some things that maybe they haven't done prior, uh, to Chief Rakuci joining us. Um, so I did just want to share that with the council. Um, we do have a number of offices that are still in school who will be graduating soon, uh, but we should be in a position very shortly, um, provided we stay at full strength to put this model, uh, actually into operation in the patrol division. So it really doesn't require any resources, but I just wanted to share with the council sort of what we're doing internally in response to the feedback we got from the residents. The next item I'll just touch on very briefly is sustainability. Um, as we look through the survey, one of the things that we noted and I think we certainly knew if you've worked in or lived in Tacoma Park for any time, is one of the things that our residents really do enjoy about the city are the trees and the parks. Um, other factors that got cited by our residents as far as why they chose to live in Tacoma Park were the progressiveness of the community and the diversity, um, of those who live here. Park were the progressiveness of the community and the diversity of those who live here. Other things that came up had to do with the shortage of affordable housing, and I think, as Mayor Williams indicated, you'll have a very extensive discussion about that next week. Those things may seem very fragmented that I'm mentioning, but I think they all really come under the umbrella of sustainability, which is kind of why I put them here. What we would suggest to the council is, as you talk about going forward with environmental protection, and you certainly had, I think, a Going Green Night, I think is what Mayor Williams called it on the 22nd, is that you also keep in mind that there's other elements of sustainability besides the environment, and I think we had some, I made some brief comments about this Monday evening. What I would like to suggest that the council consider is that perhaps you broaden the scope of the Committee on the Environment and really kind of refocus it as more a Sustainability Advisory Committee. As I mentioned, I'm kind of jumping around a little bit in the interest of time, but when, at least in city management circles, when you talk about sustainability, sometimes we refer to it as what's called a triple bottom line. That's sort of the buzz phrase that we use. And there's really three elements of sustainability as defined in that model, and it's the environment or environmental protection, the economy, and I think under that umbrella, you also talk about financial stability of the organization and the community, and social equity. So I would like to suggest that the council maybe consider kind of redefining the Committee on the Environment, kind of taking into account those elements, and maybe Ms. Brakeway and I have talked about some maybe initial steps the council could take relative to the environmental protection, and certainly you had Mr. Silverman's suggestions earlier this evening. We have a number of existing city programs, I think, that fall under environmental protection, stormwater management, urban forestry, recycling, solid waste, and energy conservation among them. In thinking about this, I think recognizing that there is also a very strong concern on the part of our residents about their tax burdens, what Ms. Brakeway and I have kind of kicked around a few ideas for the council's consideration is maybe as an initial first step, building upon some of the programs that we have, and I think there is a lot that we can do that has considerable benefits, but kind of at low cost. In regard to stormwater management, I think there are some opportunities for the council and the staff to review the existing ordinance for possible enhancement and strengthening. One of the things that Ms. Brakeway and I have talked about with the City Engineer is possibly providing for a smaller disturbance area to more closely match the county requirements, and basically provide a mechanism to more closely watch what's happening when development is occurring. The review itself, obviously, doesn't have any kind of budgetary impact, and I think if we did make a move to a smaller disturbance area, it really does not impact the City Engineer's workload to any significance, so there would not be any additional staffing required just for that one change. I think the council had some discussions with the Committee on the Environment relative to private property, stormwater management, about possibly modeling a program after the County Rainscape Program. I think whether or not there is any cost impact for the city will somewhat depend on the extent to which we can kind of piggyback off the county's model, if they would be willing perhaps to actually accept our application to review them, and obviously, we've not yet had any discussions with the county regarding that. In terms of any budgetary impact, I think it would be a matter of what type of grant funding the council would want to allocate to that program. I would add, in my discussions with Ms. Brakeway and Mr. Kalilian, there are a lot of capital needs, and I think if we were to look at doing any type of grant program to encourage rainscape on private property, it would probably need to be some sort of supplemental revenue source in the current stormwater fee structure program. That could be general operating funds, or as Mr. Silverman alluded to, it could also be a change in the stormwater fee rate, though that was recently raised to some residents' dismay, based on the feedback we've gotten. I'm just going to touch on a few areas. In terms of urban forestry, I think many of the council members know, we do have a tree fund, and I think in the past, the council has allocated funding for planting on public property. Ms. Brakeway had a discussion with the City Arborist, and he has recommended that if the council so desires, that we could actually improve and enhance what we are doing in that area of planting trees on public property. His suggested allocation is in the range of $30,000 to $50,000 per year. We do have some available funding in the tree fund that has been set aside when someone has chosen to make a payment rather than to plant trees, and the current balance in the tree fund is approximately $34,500, and that could be used for that purpose. I think the other element of that is to take a look at the tree ordinance itself and to consider whether or not that ordinance should be modified in any way to enhance tree planting requirements, other than that which currently exists. The other flip side, I think, of what we do on city-owned property is what residents do on their property, and to try to encourage that. During this fiscal year, the Public Works Department did initiate a new program that I believe the council's familiar with, where we essentially did like a bulk tree purchase. I think, Daryl, can correct me if I'm wrong, we had about 30 people who chose to participate in that. We would suggest that we expand that program to basically take place two times a year as opposed to one. There really is no cost to the city, other than kind of the coordination services, but the trees are paid for by the residents, so other than some staff time, it has almost no budgetary impact. Few other areas that the council may wish to consider is recycling and solid waste. We do have a provision in the city ordinance, kind of encouraging the city's purchase of environmentally conscious goods. That is probably something that, quite frankly, has not gotten the emphasis, and I think from a staff standpoint, we probably need to take a look at what we're buying and if there are some opportunities beyond the typical recycle paper that our own purchasing efforts could be somewhat more green. I think there was some discussion of this the other evening about entering into an MOU with the county for multifamily and commercial recycling. I'm not sure who brought that up. It might have been under the council's Green Evening, but that is actually something that we've been having extensive discussions between the City Attorney's Office and the County Attorney's Office. We're kind of still in the stages of sharing some information, but that also would have little or no budgetary impact if the council agreed and we entered into an MOU. It would essentially fall under the county's jurisdiction for enforcement. Energy conservation, Ms. Brakeway has recommended that we may wish to retain a consultant to do sort of an assessment of city facilities, see if there's ways, either through insulation, lighting, whatever the aspects there may be, to see how we can improve the energy efficiency of our own buildings, that there would obviously be a cost associated with retaining a consultant, and without going through an RFP process, I really don't have an idea of what that would cost. We also gave some thought to what we could do to encourage our residents to make their own homes energy efficient. We're not sure how this idea would work, but what we kicked around is that perhaps the city could take on the responsibility of issuing an RFP, pre-qualifying firms that could conduct energy audits of homes, obviously at the expense of the homeowner, but the benefit might be that we sort of vetted the company to make sure that they're a bona fide firm and that they're qualified, and perhaps in exchange for, you know, the city's endorsement or advertising in the newsletter, there might be the possibility of having residents be able to tap into those services at a discounted rate. We don't know, but we do think it may be an idea that has some merit to explore. Beyond that, I think there probably is a need for some additional staffing. Most of the ideas that we've tried to come up with to date would have minimal staffing impact, but I would share with the council that I think the City Engineer and both the City Arborists, which are essentially one-man shops, do a yeoman job of what they have to work with, but I think on a day-to-day basis, even with what we're doing currently, could use some assistance. So we're always, I think, very conscious of adding city staff because that is an ongoing expense, but I would suggest that the council may want to have some further discussions about possibly creating a position, and we just tried to come up with a title. What we thought about is maybe some type of environmental projects coordinator that could provide some assistance to Mr. Kalilian and Mr. Bilton. If the council so chose to create a Sustainability Advisory Committee, this position could also provide some staff support, but also help just in coordinating perhaps city outreach with neighborhood associations in developing some new environmental programs. We did give copies of the job descriptions and the salary ranges for the positions that Gaithersburg has. Whether or not our position would look exactly like theirs remains to be determined, but my guess would be with salary and benefits, we'd probably be looking somewhere in the range of $60,000 to $65,000 per year for a position of that nature. As I mentioned, when the staff consider sustainability, it's not just about environmental protection, though I think that is a very critical component of it. I did want to take just a few moments to maybe touch on some of the other aspects, which would be the economy and sort of social equity. We are obviously doing a lot of work in term of economic development right now in terms of the council's prior priority and revitalizing the New Hampshire Avenue Corridor. I think, as the council is aware, we are a participant on the County Municipal Revenue Sharing Task Force, which is looking at tax duplication, which was certainly an issue our residents expressed some concern about. And Ms. Brooks, the City Finance Director, and I have also talked about, starting this fiscal year, the process of developing a long-range financial plan. It is actually one of my work plan goals for my status as a credentialed manager through ICMA. It was something that I voluntarily chose to work on and have attended a number of sessions. In working through the budget process to date for FY09, I think one of the things that we're talking about internally and would like to talk to the council about is looking at our facility needs. We do have an equipment replacement reserve, but that doesn't exactly deal with what do you do when you have buildings that need problems, because they're not exactly equipment, and right now, there really isn't a mechanism, other than our CIP. We can identify the needs, but we don't really have a mechanism currently in place to plan for funding. And when you do have major facility issues, whether that's renovation or maintenance, that can become very costly, and I think as a city, we do need to start planning for that. The last item, as I mentioned, was just social equity. The council, I think, took a major step in this direction earlier this year with the adoption of a living wage law. One of the provisions of that is obviously for us to monitor it, just to report back to the council in terms of what type of contracts fall under that, so you may wish to consider at some point changing the dollar limit or modifying that. There are obviously already ongoing efforts to preserve affordable housing, and I think, I kind of skipped over this a little bit, but I think Suzanne will talk about it in a little bit more detail, but I think one of the things that really struck home with me when I went through the survey results is there were some very marked differences when you looked at the ward breakdowns. And I think that was particularly true when we talked about quality of life issues, how people felt about their neighborhood as a place to raise children, or just their overall quality of life, and there was a much more favorable rating in wards one, two, and three than wards four, five, and six, and I know under Communications and Outreach, Suzanne's probably going to point out a few more differences in that regard, but I think it's very clear, at least to the staff, that there is a sense among the various wards of the city that either they're disconnected or that they don't feel that they're receiving the same level of service, and I think that's an issue we take seriously as a staff, and I'm sure it's an issue that the council takes seriously as well. I don't know that we necessarily have exactly what the right plan is, but at least we wanted to mention that this evening and hopefully start some sort of dialogue with the council. I think with that, I think Suzanne's going to talk for a few minutes about communications and outreach, and then we'll just sit back and listen to what you have to say and what direction you'd like to give us.
Thanks for the opportunity. The topic of Communications was one of the major focuses of the resident survey when it was done, and the results that have come back are very interesting for us, and we've spent a lot of time, we have, we could study this for a lot more, but what we've learned so far has been, I think, pretty interesting. One of the things that was kind of the big hit on Communications was learning that 85% of the respondents did rely on the newsletter for information on city programs, and that was more, I think, than we thought, and it cuts across lines pretty significantly, and I think that that was helpful information to us. We looked at the issue of how do people use the website? Do they use the website? We found that people with incomes less than $50,000 a year use the website less than, significantly less than those that had incomes greater than $50,000. There are some age differences in there, though. We also found that the city TV cable channel viewership was about 28%. But one of the things that was fascinating is when you look at the breakdown of who watches the city TV programming, whether it's a council meeting or it's the other programming, and in fact, it varies significantly by race, not so much by income or ward, but certainly by race. And I've listed this. For those who watched a council meeting on city TV, there was a white respondent percentage of 21%, black 44%, other 29%. For watched other programs on city TV, white 19%, black 46%, other 34%. Watched council or programs on our city website, white 10%, black 28%, other 21%. Now, we don't know what this really means in terms of why or what, how we provide information in the future, but it certainly was interesting to us in trying to figure out how we target or market our information. When the resident, the survey also said, how do they, how do people get information in other ways about the city? 61% of the respondents used the city recreation guide. I mean, that's a very large percentage, and in fact, in the rating of do people get enough information learning about the recreation programs, 80% of the people said yes, they got sufficient information on the recreation programs. On most city subjects, the majority of respondents felt that they received about the right amount of information about city things. However, when you look at the ones where about a third or more of the population of the respondents said that they could have used more information, topics that they thought they could use more information on were construction or development projects, affordable housing, the city budget, tree regulations, city council actions, and board and commission activities. And now still, a majority of these felt that they were getting enough information, but it was a significant percentage that said that they wanted more. When we looked at the, when we thought about what kind of steps to take, I think we feel that we should acknowledge the newsletter should be the key vehicle for distributing city information, because it really does cut across a variety of lines. Newsletter improvements in the past year, we've enhanced the role of the editor, and that resulted in improvements to both content and appearance. We've gotten lots of compliments. City staff uses the newsletter better, we believe, and we were able to work with the post office to get better delivery to multifamily units, and that's, I think, very important. Staff's recommendation is that we go from 11 unit, 11 issues a year to 12 issues, and that we perhaps add pages to the newsletter. One of the recommendations is we get pretty good feedback about the special kind of pull-out section in the middle that might be in color, that might be on a special topic, and that may be something that we wish to consider to continue to use. When we look at the costs of this in terms of additional printing and postage and time, it adds about $20,000 a year to the $65,000 a year that the newsletter's costing us, which, given the 85% readership rate, is actually, we feel, a very good deal. In addition to the newsletter, we recommend and want to work on improving the ease of use of the website for people seeking information, because as people, usually people go to the website because they're specifically searching for something. The Gov Q&amp;A, which is the way to find out information about city services or to list a complaint, is being implemented now, should be up soon. We'd also like to really think of a strategic use of our communications. Which city media, which outreach methods should we use based on the topic, the audience, and the timing? Although people read the newsletter, it comes out once a month, and there's a time delay, and that can be an issue. One of the things that we try to do and we want to do more of is do cross-promotion. This is when you read a little article in the newsletter, and then you can go to the website for the full document, or you see something on the, on the city TV, and you can go somewhere else for more information. So we're kind of promoting each, our same, our other kinds of media that we have. There's some nice things that we have going on in plans for the city TV. We're going to be getting a new digital server, it's in our budget. It will offer quality improvements, and it will allow some more diversity in program offerings. We're also looking at a multimedia bulletin board kind of thing that can be in this building in a number of places. It can simultaneously display video, activity calendars, like what's going on in the building, and it can do RSS feeds from outside sources. You can get your time and weather in the little corner or whatever. But one of the things that's particularly nice is we can do updates remotely on this, so if there's emergency information that needs to get out, it can be very useful. When we looked at the survey, I think the thing that was most significant to us When we looked at the survey, I think the thing that was most significant to us was the differences in sense of community in Tacoma Park. And we see that there were real differences reported in that feeling of a sense of community when you look at race, and income, and ward. And in general, as Barb mentioned, the residents of Ward four, five, and six seem to feel less connected. And one of the things that I've attached, I had to reduce it, I actually have the full 11 by 17 piece of paper, but is a chart that summarizes some of the results of the survey. What I did is I looked through what I considered topics that indicated a sense of community that were asked on the survey. What is the, what is your perception of the overall quality of life in Tacoma Park? And the overall quality of life in your neighborhood? How does Tacoma Park rate as a place to raise children? How do you feel about a sense of community? What are your opportunities to attend cultural and arts activities? And what is your, what is your feeling of openness and acceptance of the community to people of diverse backgrounds? When you look through this, if you look at the acceptance in the community to people of diverse backgrounds, white people have the strongest feeling about that, blacks a little bit less, people of other races feel less than that. The less money you have, the less you feel that's the case. And the wards where there's less feeling of that is particularly noticeable in wards four and ward six. And that kind of thing goes through the various categories that I've, that I've mentioned, with one exception, and that is the opportunity, opportunities to attend cultural and arts activities. That one I found very interesting, because there's very little difference by race, or income, or ward in that category. And when we were thinking about communications, we're thinking, you know, how do we help build a sense of community? This may be an opportunity. This may be a place where we can take advantage, better advantage, of the cultural and arts opportunities in Tacoma Park. We can have our better brochures when we go out to these events. We can involve more departments or city services in those events, and maybe we can make some connections where we haven't been making the connections as well before. We really haven't, I think, put staff attention to that recently. And I think that's something that we think has some real opportunity. Part of what we'd like to see is a real focus on welcoming the community, all of us. That means we have to focus on customer service improvements. There's certainly lots in the resident survey that was good about customer service, but there was some, I think, well-deserved criticisms, and those are things we need to look at. I think we need to welcome people here. I think we need to welcome, welcome them to the city building. I think we need to welcome them to council meetings. One thing I'm looking forward to is our signage for this building. I think that will help welcome people, and that's expected by April. And I think in some, we want to recognize that we all have a role to play in building that welcoming community, and we want to see it across all the wards and all the different parts of our Tacoma Park. So I just wanted to mention this, we want to look into this a lot more. I think when we go into the details, we want to do more cross tabs, and we want to, you know, play with it. And we're not going to get there all the way, but I think that there's some real steps that we can make to improve communications, improve outreach, and allow people to feel comfortable coming here for the services we provide.
Thank you, Suzanne and Barb. Who would like to talk about priorities? Who would like to talk?
Dan.
Some of us went to the county rec department today to talk about Piney Branch Pool. And for those of you who are following along in the Piney Branch Pool discussion, there are a number of bureaucracies that have a part in that project, whether, however it goes forward. And I was struck by the differences between the outlooks in, in the different departments in the county and in our own city. And I'd like to put out there that one of our priorities be that we try to improve our partnership with the county, so that we work better with them. We're going to need to do that as we address the tax duplication and service duplication issues. In general, I think if we have that as a priority, that, that'll spur us on to making gains in that area, and also making gains in other projects. We're not alone, and we have to learn to, to work with them financially and programmatically.
I think I agree with Dan, that's a, something important, and I think we've seen it as we look at the rebate issue. And I also think about some of the things that we used to do with Recreation Department and Recreation Programs, that we had a stronger relationship with the County Recreation Department, and actually partnered on a lot of programs. And I think that's something we'd benefit to explore again.
When I started on the council a couple of years ago, we were talking about the council priorities, and we, actually, we sat down there, and we had the big lists around, and we wrote everything up, and, and we ended up with quite a list of activities. And I think to some extent, the priorities that we listed were very activities-based. Specific issues around how to preserve affordable housing, the very specific priority of the completion of the community center and the building of a gymnasium. And I think we had the redevelopment of the New Hampshire Avenue corridor. When we, when we funded that with budget dollars, there was more flexibility in that money, but a lot of our priorities were very specifically named. And I think that there may be some advantages to that, but I think there's some disadvantages as well. And I would like to talk about the idea of going to a more flexible set of priorities. When I was campaigning this time, I talked about quality of life issues, sort of in the, in the broader sense, about children and family services activities, and about improving some of the administrative components, which really what I meant by that were more the customer service, customer-friendly component parts. And so I guess I would like to throw that out there for discussion. I, you know, kind of, I've listed all the different things that I'm interested in, and I've been, I listened to what the city manager put forth. I've received emails from various people in the community that are active and engaged about things that they're interested in. I received some email from folks in the Committee on the Environment, very interested in seeing environmentalism become a priority. And so I guess what I'm wondering is, you know, what is really the structural approach that we want to take to the priorities? Do we want to retain the approach that we had two years ago, where we had these really kind of specific component pieces? Or do we want to go to this, this broader kind of approach that would provide, I think, more flexibility for the staff to operate within that, and then also more flexibility for us down the road as, as things shift? And just to use the gym as an example, because I think it's the one that stands out the most. I feel like there was a point, a year into the two-year priority cycle, where I, I could see the writing on the wall on the gym, but it was specifically in the priority list. And we, I think we kind of, from my perspective, kept plowing forward with it for a while after, I think it was clear to me anyway, that there were, there were going to be long-term challenges with that. But, so I was trying to think about different things, and I, I think it's interesting then that the city manager came back with these three areas of community safety, sustainability, communications, and outreach. It's almost like they're kind of cross-cutting initiatives. And I think rather than community safety, I would probably use maybe a more encompassing kind of quality of life issue, which is, a lot of that is about community safety, and that's what we hear a lot, a lot about. But there are other quality of life issues. But a lot of it is the traffic, the crime, the sidewalk issues. But some of it is about how the streets get repaired, some of it's about the tree planting and, and pieces like that. I think the sustainability is a great category, especially when you think about it in the way that they're describing it as not just, you know, that, not just, but not only trees and environmental issues, but also sustainability. In some ways, the tax duplication issues and the, and the cost recapture issues for us are sustainability issues. And the development issues, you know, how do we redevelop the downtown and the junction and the New Hampshire Avenue corridor? Those are sustainability, and that's, in terms of how do we sustain our, our sense of community here, and what do we look like? And then the last one, communications and outreach, I guess I would probably expand that to, to be about customer service, because it's more than just, I think I'd like to capture more than just the communication, I'll use that term again, not only the, not only the communication and outreach components of it, but also the issues like, how easy is it for people to utilize the services? And this comes back to, for example, that, you know, the credit card issue. Can you use a credit card? Can you pay over the phone? What's the return time on phone calls? Does our email function? Does our phone service, you know, has, has our phone got waterlogged and our phone systems got down, got knocked down? So I guess that's, I would be interested in people's thoughts about that kind of an approach.
If I can just add to that for a second, I agree, I think we need to have broader categories, because we get stuck if they're defined too narrowly. And as I went through and tried to work mine up, I kept having that same sense of putting in little notes saying, you know, here's one, but see the other one, because it's part of that one, too, and that, that cross-cutting way. I think the thing that we have to recognize and be careful about if we go that route is with more flexibility comes kind of less accountability if the staff and the council and the community aren't talking as much, and everybody gets going in different directions, and you can get surprises. So I think it's a good thing to do, but I think it'll require a little more monitoring and communication more often about these, but I like the idea of keeping them broad. And I have my list, but who else wants to go? Terry?
If you don't mind, I'd like to just comment on Councilmember Clay's suggestion. And by the way, I love these sessions, because it's kind of like Christmas, you need to pick all the things you want, at least talk about them if you don't get them. I understand what Councilmember Clay is saying about these broader topic areas, but I'm not really sure that they end up being priorities when they get to be so broad. And I wonder if we're not talking about some type of a, of a vision for our government, and, you know, what we would like to see. You know, when we're talking about customer service, I think it isn't a matter of setting a priority that goes for two years, it's a matter of saying, you know, this is the way we see customer service should be handled within the city. I just worry about opening this up too broad, as we said, Mayor Williams, that if you lose accountability, and you, you lose the specificity that, that Barb understands what it is that we want. I think maybe it gets too general and of less value.
I like the idea of starting with a mission statement, and I noticed in the charter, it has, it doesn't use a quality of life and sustainability, but it has much the same kinds of ideas in the charter of what the city coun, the city council is supposed to do. But I, but I do wonder, I have the same concern that Councilmember Siemens raised, about it not being as concrete. And particularly because I've been thinking that one of the things that's helpful when considering priorities, this is just a thought contribution here, is that you think of them as priorities for, for a particular time period. So when I looked at the ones we had last time, we had a big emphasis on affordable housing, for example. And we spent a huge amount of time revising the affordable housing code section. And it seems to me, while there are still things we would want to do this year on, on affordable housing, compared to the focus we had on it then, seems like it would be, you know, farther down the list. And correspondingly, there's been, I've heard just as, just as we heard tonight, but I heard from people in my ward again, that the general area of sustainability, although they all use different words for it, as the city manager was mentioning, talking about the economy and the community, social equity and the environment, some lists like that, making it sustainability very broadly, really would hit what a lot of, would cover what a lot of my constituents, anyway, were, were talking about. And it seems to me that would be something that we might want to focus on in the next year or so as one of the priority items. So I like, and, and the other comment I want to make concerning, for example, the tax duplication, that, that will remain a priority, but there's a clear timing issue. There are some efforts underway right now on this one, this particular issue. And until those issues, those discussions and committee work reach fruition, it seems like there isn't that much that we should be doing on it. So this is one that perhaps in the second half of the year, you know, we might focus on a lot. So I like, I like, my, my main point is to, it helps me, anyway, to think about these things as, it's not that we're forgetting about affordable housing, for example, it's just that we did a lot of work on affordable housing, and we have these other issues, and for this year, we'll focus on, you know, two or three things and, and really work on them. And there will be other things, of course, that won't go away, it's just that I like the idea of focusing on a small number of things with a lot of energy and thought and so on, and then in the future, shifting to other, other priorities, rather than trying to do six, or eight, or 10 priorities all the time, and feeling like you have to do something in each one of those priority areas.
Thank you. I admire the thoughtfulness that has gone into this document by the staff. It looks as though you really put on your thinking caps and, and worked hard over the last week. I tend to subscribe to the less is more school, and in some ways, these, these broad categories are attractive for that reason, because, you know, they don't try to list everything conceivable, although behind them is quite a complex mix of activities and sub-goals, which I think you rightly have displayed here, things that are little or no apparent cost to those that are going to add staff, more police officers, and environmental liaison people and so forth, and, you know, with quite a high price tag. I did observe just a second ago that the second set of categories doesn't have any, or don't, doesn't have any verbs associated with them, making them quite different from the list from last year, which do. And that's probably easily, easily correctable, but it's kind of interesting that they went from, you know, these statements, these grand statements, to the, that eclipsed the, the maybe more graspable set of goals that we had in the previous year. And I think, too, that there's, there's a huge, there's also a very large number of possibilities, and I, again, thank you for, for giving those to us, because it means we're going to have to work harder, and probably can't accomplish a whole lot tonight, to have additional discussions. to work harder and probably can't accomplish a whole lot tonight, to have additional discussions about which of these things, under each broad category, we think that we can accomplish. And then within that, there is such a mix that you have provided, that some cry out to be labeled as long-term goals, such as the development things, which is a five, six, maybe 10-year activity, which hopefully will be on the radar screen and subject to our thinking and action and budget for many years. Others perhaps could be accomplished in a shorter timeframe. And I think one would, this body would want to look at some combination or mix of the two of them. As far as communications are concerned, while it's certainly good to flag this as a discrete goal and a big one, it seems to me that that is a function along with customer service, that is, that permeates all of these activities across the whole range. And unless there's a real need for, to get people's attention, including our own, and focus that attention and hold it, it might be wise or wiser to have communication goals within each of the areas that we finally decide that we're going to focus on. And the same thing would be true of the customer service, which certainly is part of communication, but I see it as sort of a separate set of discrete activities and also a kind of culture that is fostered here, that has its own measures of sorts, but may need more. And I guess it seems to be more, you know, more culture than it does sort of a set of discrete activities, including mindsets and so forth. And maybe communication is similar to that. So to summarize, I think that this is an excellent piece of work for us to chew over. I think that the large themes are the way to go, like the two of them, maybe there's others. But then I think the real devil in the details will be try to identify and prioritize the things that we really want to do under each of the broad categories and make sure we don't overstretch ourselves, because it's so easy to do, you know, it's so tantalizing to want to do all of these things here. But I don't see the staff as we have now and the work that we're already doing as allowing for, you know, unlimited good works that we might otherwise want to engage in.
Josh? I also thank the city staff for trying to cull down and bring the resident survey into something that's manageable to think about. So I appreciate that. And I also appreciate the acknowledgement that there's probably a lot more to do there. And I'm still getting my mind around the responses and trying to figure it out. Also still digesting this helpful document. I'm okay with the idea of some general broad categories as a starting point, but I'm very pragmatic. And I think it would do a disservice to the staff and a disservice to the city if we didn't pick specific, tangible, time-oriented goals that we're going to try and achieve. I think a disservice to the staff because I think it can leave them unclear on what exactly we want. And as the policymakers up here, we are supposed to make the tough decisions about where to put the resources and give the staff some guidance about that. We shouldn't advocate that job to them. So I would choose that we have some really specific time, time-specific goals within those categories. And, you know, what I've heard again and again are, you know, under community safety is crime, people walking, feeling safe walking in the streets. And I realize in my ward, people feel safer than in many wards in the city. So I think that's definitely a citywide issue and concern. The sustainability idea, I struggle with a little bit because as I read through what goes under sustainability, I felt like, well, I can make the logical case for almost anything going under here, and then, you know, that's, in a sense, we're saying nothing at the same time as trying to say something. So I'm not sure where that fits, although I'm very committed to the idea of affordable housing and equity. Economic development and shopping opportunities, places for economic activity and people to do enjoyable activities, like buy things and go to nice restaurants, I think the survey would also say are pretty high up on people's priority lists. So I don't know if that fits under sustainability, but for Old Town, I hear that again and again. As the vacancies have risen more recently, it has come to the forefront again. And I think, like Doug, I think that's not something we're going to solve in a year or two years. Yes, we can do a better job in the short term of recruiting more businesses, but the longer-term solutions are really more structural and are longer, five, six-year activities that we'll need to undertake around getting more density close to shops, straightening out the parking situation, and figuring out a way to market ourselves as a city to businesses. But we can choose shorter-term goals towards those, and we should. And then lastly, I think, you know, the item does sort of fit under communication or outreach. I hear again and again about what would be called customer service or constituent services, both in an outbound way, people want to be communicated more effectively. I'm not sure if that's the website or the city newsletter. I know the city newsletter, I said this before, the city newsletter was cited as something that, in the survey, that people read a lot. And I also think we're the most capable at producing the city newsletter. We've done it for a long time, and we produce a really great newsletter. The website is a different story. I remember when I was running, I was actually trying to find the TASD report on the website. So I put in TASD into the search engine, and the search engine is less than optimal, to put it nicely. I got, you know, PowerPoint pages from various reports at different times. You'd think you'd put in TASD and the finished report would be the first thing that would come up in a search engine. So I say that only to say that I think part of the reason the website may not be cited as something that people use as much is because I think we're just not adept at using that medium yet. I think we can definitely get there. And then the inbound aspect of just customer service, someone calls, either a council member or a city staff person has X, Y, or Z requests, I hear pretty consistently, sometimes it gets handled very quickly and efficiently, and sometimes they never hear back. And I think that's just the discipline and giving the staff the tools to manage that process. So yes, I guess those specific things, those three specific things that I would choose around safety, in particular, street safety, economic development, and customer service and constituent services could fit under those three things that were mentioned. But to me, it's very important that we be specific so that the staff and Barb know when they've done a good job, delivered on those policy priorities. And we hold ourselves accountable as decision-makers to make some tough choices about what we're going to focus on. Because I think it is nice, it is sort of like when you're writing your Christmas list, but at some point, Santa actually comes and he gives you some of the things and you don't get others of the things. And in this case, where sort of Santa, we have to choose and make those tough choices.
Well, and then let me, just for a second, add to that as a parochial Santa from North Pole Ward Six. And looking at the results of the survey and finding out that in Ward Six gets the lowest score for overall quality of life, sorry, overall quality of life in the neighborhood, what about to throw out, in addition to these categories, some specific goals for specific parts of the city? I'd like to know, you know, how we're going to address this low score of 52, which is 7% lower than the other, the two other wards that are the lowest. What can we do as a city to bring those numbers up? Whether it's public safety, or whether it's sustainability, or the environment, or I suspect it's probably more of the former than the latter, but I don't know that we've ever had different goals for different parts of the city, but why not throw that into the mix?
I would definitely support Councilmember Barry on that. I think as I marked up my copy of the chart on the resident survey results, I see that on just about every category that's listed on here, Ward Four, Five, and Six rank at the bottom of the list. And so I would think that in the priority that basically says, we've got to raise those numbers in that category for those three wards, to try to bring them in line with the rest of the city, would be a high priority.
My turn. And I'll pass this down, just because I took a few minutes today before taking my nap and did this, so I'll share it with you. And I've made notes this evening that changes some of this and adds to it, but just a couple of thoughts. First, I also appreciate the work the staff put into... Ooh. Don't know what that is.
Is there a communications director in this?
We should really look at redoing this auditorium and the sound.
Put it down, like that.
Move it to the side a little?
Have you thought about this?
Now that we know that it's his mic, turn him down, we'll keep going.
Yes.
I like the idea of going with broader goals that can be continuing goals for years. We've tended to, in the past, adopt two-year priorities and then kind of give them, I believe, one-year, three-year, and five-year categories within that to look at how they might go out over time. Ooh, I'm getting lots of echo. And I think if we make the categories broad, we can still look at timeframes and maybe recognize that some of these, if we define them broadly like sustainability, will be a good category to keep kind of looking at and discussing and prioritizing within it a number of things over the years. It could, sustainability could hang around for 10 years. I think sustainability also fits very well with the efforts that other bodies in the region are taking. COG is starting to look at things and setting things up about sustainability. Montgomery County has set up a number of bodies and programs looking at sustainability. The state has some sustainability programs. So I think if we do that, we're kind of thinking strategically like other entities and we're coordinated a bit better and maybe, I'm no big fan of kind of using lingo, but at least if we're talking the same thing, it might be easier to recognize some opportunities for partnerships. And I think partnerships is another good broad category that cuts across some of this stuff because you get into tax duplication, you get into sustainability, and of course, community safety with working with other agencies and other jurisdictions. So to the extent that we can define them broadly, yet keep after them to have the discussions, I think it's good. What I put down here was tax duplication. And I think one of the things that I was thinking about, as Councilmember Sniffer was talking about, kind of, gee, maybe that's for the second half of the year, I think the piece that isn't out there is that we may know that this task force, this municipal county task force, is ongoing and that they were supposed to report in December, but now they're probably going to report in May. So we kind of follow up on some of these things. We're following some of the state issues, and I'm following those at the Legislative Committee with revenue sources, expanding revenue sources across the state. But that doesn't necessarily get communicated to our residents, so they just think that nothing's going on, and what happened, this got dropped. So I think one of the things that was suggested to me was that we need to think about going forward with that with a broader organization to talk about it. We had the TASD committee, their task kind of ended, the suggestion was that it's almost in some ways like unification, where you have citizen involvement and a citizen organization that works in tandem with the city to try and follow up on these issues, lobby as necessary, get the word out. And I haven't, it hasn't quite gelled in my mind how that would work, but I think it's worth considering so that we aren't left in the lurch as kind of things go underground for a while. I think it's also good, I was at a meeting the other night, and there were some questions that came up about, gee, what if we did give the police function back to the county, you know, kind of what's it cost us now, what would it cost us then, and what service do we get now versus what service we would get from the county for that money? And I think it would be very helpful in budget documents and in talking about things like that. And maybe this, I don't remember, it's been a while since I read the TASD report, this may be in there, but looking at, for instance, the police department that it costs, we have $5.4 million in the budget, but we get a rebate of approximately half, so that, you know, in terms of the money coming from the revenue side, it's, the effective cost is a lot less than it would seem just from the expenditure. So to do that for various broad categories so that people understand which departments are the ones that we pay solely for and that aren't going to change much, like whatever we do with the library, we're locked into a rebate formula that started at about $100,000 and change per year and goes up incrementally each year, and that's all it's ever going to be. And, you know, if the library went away, the county wouldn't take it over, wouldn't keep it open, they'd just say, long branch covers it, that's it, the library's gone. So just understanding those broad categories and how that works, I think that would be helpful in communicating to people. The thing that I talked a lot about throughout the fall in the campaign and that I continue to talk about is being, having a proactive redevelopment sense and having the conversation in the community about what it is that we're looking for. And I think that was reinforced by the survey, where there were, one of the glaring things that jumped out at me was that people said, the shopping's lousy. And if we, it ties into sustainability because if you have to drive elsewhere to do your shopping or take public transit to do your shopping, that's putting more vehicle miles on the roads, and then our neighbors in other areas are going, now we're the community to park. And to the extent that we are a sustainable community and we are a walkable community, we need more services here. I would say that it's accurate to say that most developers, if asked, do you want to come look at a potential project in Tacoma Park, if they have any sense, they would say, no, thank you. I don't want to deal with you, it's very difficult, anything I come up with, you're going to say no. And I think that reputation is somewhat well-deserved. So I think as I've talked with people, nobody has said, oh, you're wrong about this, we don't need to do this. Everybody's said, you're right, that we need to have that conversation among ourselves and talk about what it is that we want to have in various areas around the city for redevelopment, vet that and be able to go out and talk to people about what it is that we need and talk about the kinds of businesses that we come we need and talk about the kinds of businesses that would come here. And it can be as broad or as narrow a discussion as we want to have because it can incorporate a lot of different issues, even as far as residential, you can get into mansionization and any number of things about what makes the community sustainable. So it's redevelopment, it's economic, it's sustainable. Also, the partnerships, it ties in with the, Montgomery County has a big economic development department, and we've had some cooperation with them on the New Hampshire Avenue, but, and we've had some, a little bit of cooperation with them on the setting up of the second farmer's market. So we've begun to have some cooperation, but that's one of those services that we're paying for in our county taxes that we're not getting the benefit for. You know, they've worked on Bethesda, they've worked on Wheaton, they've worked on Rockville, they've worked on Silver Spring, we need that. But in order to go to them and get that, we need to be able to say, this is what we're looking for, or help us decide what it is that we're looking for, and not just go say, we need help, and they say, with what? I liked the sustainability concept that the city manager put forward. I liked the community safety umbrella. And I could see kind of subsuming communications efforts into all of those. In many ways, they all work with each other. As I went through this, I kept coming up with having to put, see also, the other category as I went through my list. So I think to the extent that we can do large concepts and then start to identify individual things for short-term, medium-term, and long-term that we could look at, then we don't have to have this start-over conversation in a year or in two years. We just adjust, and as long as we keep talking about it and keep the big concept in our sights, I think with some attention, we can have those conversations and not have anybody get too far afield. Dan?
It's 9:01, and we have to, we're stopping in 29 minutes, as I understand it, Mayor Williams?
Yes.
Okay.
And we'll have another hour in two weeks.
All right. So we're trying to set goals and priorities according to the cover sheet. And goals are bigger and priorities are smaller. And I think we ought to have a goal for, to help the non-governmental portions of Tacoma Park. And I think we ought to have a goal for our own government. And I think we ought to have a goal for our, the county we're in, and then maybe one for the rest of the world, okay? Kind of segmented that. Where are we? We're here. So here are my four. I'm going to wordsmith a little bit and see what you think. A significantly reduced, and these are where we'd like to be when we get to our goal, this is, I'm trying to be concrete and get us to where we want to be. We want, we want a significantly reduced energy and environmental footprint. That's the big one. That's the world kind of thing, right? We want a safe and sustainable local economy. Trying to wordsmith here. That's the non, kind of a non-governmental part. We want a welcoming, effective, and open government, city government. That's our own government. And we want, this is back to the first one I said, an improved partnership with the county. So to me, I'm just wordsmithing here, but I, I'm trying to put things in categories of who we have some control over or who we interact with, our own citizens, our own city government, our relationship with the county, and what we owe the world and the United States and so forth. So a pragmatist like, pragmatist like Councilmember Wright, a generalist like Councilmember Clay, I know Terry and I are on the same wavelength as far as the county goes, I'm listening to you, Mayor Williams, about having the broad thing, and then we can chip away at the priorities inside those broad categories, even down to the ward level, as Councilmember Barry mentioned. And your comments were so long ago, Councilmember Sniffer had kind of forgotten them, but I'm sure they were very good. I'm sure they were good.
They were 31 minutes ago.
He can review them. I'm not going to say them, don't worry. In the interest of moving forward, I actually like this set that you have here, Bruce, council mayor, I'll try to remember to do it that way. I would just change redevelopment to development, but...
And I would, I would.
Yeah, I know. I agree with the thrust of having broad goals, but you do have to come down to priorities at some point, and that's why, that's why I think this is a pretty good set. And I will just shut up and let other people talk.
Ellen?
So I didn't mean to suggest in my initial comments that we would just come up with a couple of snappy terms like quality of life, livability, sustainability, and then let the staff have at it and tell them at the end of the year whether they were able to telepathically understand what we wanted and give them feedback.
And we understood that implicitly.
So, but I think we did get to some of the different points here as people were making their comments, and I think everybody kind of touched on it. But I guess one of the components that I want to come back and address around the structure issue is the idea of how long our priority or goal or whatever it is you want to call it, like what is the lifespan of that? So I guess my concern is that when I came on to the council two years ago, we did these priorities, and now it's been, actually, a little bit more than two years, and we're coming back and visiting it again, but some of them received less action than others during the time period, and then there was this kind of struggle and people wanted to see other things. And so maybe something we would build into this is a mechanism for that flexibility, what's our, what's our two-year priority, and how are we going to find that? Because we really didn't do that last time. We just, these are our five things, and I actually wasn't really clear that they were going to go for two years. And at the end of the first year, I'm like, how come we're not doing the priorities again? Oh, well, those are for two years. I was like, oh, I wish I'd known that when we had the most conversation. So I guess I would like to see that. And then the other thing is I'm trying to sort of feed back the different things that I've heard from the staff and the other council members, and one of the things that came over pretty clear is about the difference in roles between setting policy priorities and deciding what are the specific actions that meet those priorities. And so we haven't really had that conversation, and it's one of the reasons why I thought it might be good to do the, sort of, what's the structure of the budget conversation first, because in some ways I think that provides the framework for that, because when you decide what the budget's going to look like and what the measurement goals are, I think that tells you a little bit about how that feeds back into the priorities. And so, for example, you did this nice sheet here with the council priorities, and a lot of these are really specific actions or strategies and not necessarily outcomes that we're looking for, although, although some of them, some of them are. And I think, Dan, you had, you had four pieces. The first three I heard were outcomes, and the fourth one was actually a strategy. And I think the outcome that you're looking for is some sort of more equitable...
Maybe you're talking about the improved partnership with the county?
Yes.
That's a state. I see that as a state. Where our partnership with the county right now has some flaws.
Right.
And I'd like to see that improve, so...
To what end, though? And so, so I guess that's the...
That's where your priorities sit under...
Yeah, so that's the question. So some of those are these outcome goals, and then these others are the action strategies. And there are a lot of great strategies here, and these are the kinds of things that people feed to us all the time. In fact, I think Mr. Silverman was here earlier and gave us a two-page list of them. I'm sorry, Catherine Tunis is gone because I think she sent me about 20 pages of potential activities that the Committee on the Environment could do. They're all terrific activities, but they're not really what I thought we were going to talk about, I guess.
We can't cover that minutia, no matter how long this conversation lasted, right?
Well, and I think the point that I, from what I heard the city manager saying, is that it's not really what we're here to do. So I guess, I still feel like there's different, like people are saying different, different things and different approaches. And so, but let's talk, for example, I'll pick on you since you're my friend.
I appreciate it.
We had this conversation about the community center, and is the community center open on, in the evenings, essentially, on Saturday evenings, on the weekends? So this is, is this something that we would put into the council priority, a specific action, like open the community center on the weekend? Well, what happens when you put that in the priorities and there, and there are, you know, reasons why that can't happen, but maybe there are other mechanisms for engaging young people? And what you really want is to engage young people in a variety of different ways and in the different, and in the time periods where young people need that engagement and need a place to be, so that at all of the times when we have young people out in the, in the community, we have maybe some way of engaging them, either they're in school or we always have some kind of a program all the way up through midnight basketball if we had access to the gymnasium. So, so I guess what I'm saying is I'm not quite comfortable yet that we've defined the structure in which the priorities are going to go. And so, do we want to keep having a conversation about, I think these are good priorities in this format, I think these are good priorities in this format? Do we want to decide what the structure is going to be, or do we want to come back like we did last time and get out the markers? And Suzanne Ledlow had all the, you know, the...
That's your family.
Yeah, and she had things stuck all over the walls and everything. And get everything out there that we want, then convert it to goals, and then organize it under priorities. And that's another approach that we could take. Because you're right, we could sit up here and, I mean, I could come back with a list that, of all kinds of different action items, and how are we, how are we going to sort all that out? And what's it going to look like when we're done?
Just a quick comment?
Yeah.
To pick your exact example, if youth activities were a priority, then if somebody suggested, well, should we do, focus on seniors or should we focus on youth? How should we, how should we make that call? And if the council priority were youth activities, then we would say, well, we would take youth activities and seniors is for another time, or lower priority, or whatever. So it would help us make those calls. If we had a set like this, it would help us make, I think it would help us make those calls when we got down to the detail level, which at some point, somebody's going to, whether it's the council or the, or the city manager.
Hang on a second. And just, I like where this discussion is going because I think Colin's point is a good one, that we have to kind of all get to the same framework before we get down to deciding pieces. One of the things that I had on my list that I didn't mention was possibly trying to put together the, kind of, the community organization piece, kind of, how, and we're going to have that discussion about city committees, and I know that when the city manager came, she had some, some ways that she had worked with various city community, city committees or community leaders in other places, and we haven't really, either, either we haven't allowed her to get around to that or she hasn't had time to get around to that. And maybe there are some ways that we can think about that committee discussion and how it goes out to neighborhood associations and how we, how we put together a strategy for getting people a little, maybe a little more coordinated about some of these, with the priorities that we have, and maybe more effective rather than, I know we've gotten some feedback from some committees that, gee, we don't, you know, we haven't had enough contact with the council, we don't know what the, what the goal is, maybe we had this one thing and we're off working on it, but we haven't gotten the feedback to say, yeah, this is what you should be doing, or no, we want you to move in another direction. So I would just put out there that one broad thing that we could do that has some, some very specific tasks is improve the communication of the council and of the city with various community organizations or city committees or whatever other format people get together in to try and make sure that everybody's talking. Terry?
Thank you. Before I address Councilmember Clay's latest discussion and her victimization of me as an example, I would like to compliment Mayor Williams on what he's just said. I think it's exactly where we need to go, and I think what you're really talking about is that we need to give some thought to the council's planning on how we want to better manage our job and use our committees more effectively and direct staff more effectively. I think that's, I think that's great. I think we've been moving in that direction since you took over as mayor, and I'm glad to see we're continuing to follow that. I think Councilmember Clay is exactly right that, you know, we've got our, my Christmas list is growing. You know, I've got a lot of wishes, and I've heard now a lot of other people's wishes for Christmas. I've also received, as Councilmember Clay says, things from people from around the city. Andy Kellerman sent me a long list of requests. I'm sure everybody on the council has received these. And we can't, we haven't nearly gotten to the point where we can incorporate all those in our discussion tonight. But I think Councilmember Clay's suggestion is, is good, and that is that maybe we need to have another facilitated discussion where we list all these things and then divide them up and decide, maybe, maybe some we throw in the trash, but decide which ones are, are really specific activities that we want to see addressing some priorities. You know, what are goals? What are the objectives that we're, that we're trying to accomplish? And then which of those do we prioritize for the city manager? So I, I guess, in conclusion, I'm saying that I'm not sure an hour is going to, going to get us where we need to be, and that maybe we need to add a little bit more time. I'm not averse to having another one of these off-night meetings to complete this task, although I feel sympathy for the staff members, especially those who live in Virginia, that keep you here another night.
And let me just also add that there's the potential for some more time to deal with this on the late heat as well.
Just three, three things. One is I forgot in my brief discussion of priorities or things I thought are important were things related under sustainability to the environment. I don't want to leave people with the suggestion that that wasn't something that I was deeply committed to.
Oh, we were ready to pin you on that.
The other thing is process. I think I would agree with Councilmember Clay a great deal about the process is going to be important. And I find it sort of difficult for us to have a discussion and a back and forth and hash out the ideas in this format of sitting up at the dais. I think it'd be much easier in sort of sitting around a table with flip charts where we can eventually put sticky pads up to vote on things or what have you. Then lastly, I just wanted to go back to a comment or something that Doug and Terry both brought up, which is about the difference in the quality of life in the wards. You know, I'd look briefly at the, a little bit more at the survey, and if you look at the categories where people in, particularly in Ward 1 and Ward 6 rate as bigger problems, it is crime and graffiti and litter are things mentioned there. I don't think that's all of the, of the things, but I would defer to both of you to, because you have the best feel for your neighborhoods, to help us figure out what we, as a city, can do to help those neighborhoods and raise the quality of life score. Because I do agree that although we might not get them exactly even, because I think there's things that are probably outside the city's control that affect people's quality of life, we can do a lot to make it more equitable across the city.
Maybe, I was going to...
Can I just add one short thing?
Sure, go ahead.
Something I've thought about a number of times during tonight, and then I always get off on the more immediate issue, but I just wanted to take a minute to compliment Barb and the staff on what we have accomplished towards last year's priorities or the last council's priorities. I think when you go down that list, you know, there's been remarkable progress, and I've really seen the focus that Barb has given the staff on each of these priorities. And I, I not only appreciate what, you know, what's happened over the last two years, but I think it reemphasizes the importance of this for the council to, to do this right.
Thank you. Sure. I was going to try and focus for a few minutes about next steps and what do we want to do for the next time we talk about this. And first, I'll ask the city manager if she has any comments or thoughts, and then we'll go to next steps. And you can comment on next steps.
No, I think what I was just going to share is, I guess, kind of what the council priorities mean to me and a... mean to me and how we go about doing our job. And I think it's really twofold, and I think Councilmember Siemens just alluded to part of it is kind of having a sense of what the council's priorities are, really feeds into, obviously, my work plan from the council, but also it filters down through all the management team members. I know it filters down into some of their staff's work plans. So I do think some, I don't know if it necessarily has to be the exercise we went through two years ago, but as I was sharing with Councilmember Clay, we were chatting before the meeting, and I'll be perfectly honest, part of it besides, you know, making sure we all had some idea of where we were going, I think was also to try to convey to the council exactly how much work goes beyond what may be, you know, a hundred words on a page translates into literally thousands and thousands of staff hours. I don't want to be inflexible about it, and I do think it's important you all can change But I think it does create some focus, and I think it's also important that as you come up with new ideas, we can certainly shift gears, but what I don't want to see happen or provide the council with any false sense that we can just, as a staff, keep taking things on. There are choices to be made, both in terms of how the staff spends its time, but I think also particularly this time of year, also in terms of dollars. I've already started my meetings with the department, had very preliminary discussions about the FY09 budget, but the feedback that I get from you through this priorities process helps me put together my recommended budget. When I'm sitting there and there's only X amount of dollars, and I'm trying to make sure the city stays fiscally stable, I really look to your priorities to make those decisions in terms of what stays and what goes. So I don't know that I have any specific thoughts about your process or whether they should be broad. I think the only thing that I would say, if I, and I shared with the council probably when we went through this exercise shortly after I started, it needs to be a, we need at least have a commonality in terms of what success means. I personally, I just don't like nice flowery little phrases that there's not an agreement on what they mean, and the staff's doing gangbusters, or at least from my perspective we are, and we get to the end of the year, or probably more importantly, my evaluation period, and we all sit around and I think we've done a great job, and you all say, I think you failed. So, you know, I don't know whether or not you all see the little detailed work plans and, you know, all the sheets. I think I still have the yellow pages that Suzanne had written up and Sarah in my office somewhere, since I don't throw things out very well. Whether you see those or not, they actually do translate into our work goals. I know, obviously, I would like to take the opportunity in particular to thank Sarah and her staff. I think Councilmember Siemens was kind enough to acknowledge the work we did, and I have to say the lion's share of most of the priorities, at least that have existed for the past two years, have fallen on Sarah's staff, whether it was the planning staff or her affordable housing staff. They've done a tremendous amount of work. Did I miss someone, Sarah? Code enforcement? All of Sarah's staff, I'll say. Yeah, we will still have those detailed plans behind the scenes, even if that's not something the council wants to see, because it's how we make sure that we're staying on track and accomplishing what you want us to do. So they can be as, I don't necessarily have an opinion about how broad or how narrow. I guess I just would like them at least focused enough that we all agree on where we're headed and we know when we've succeeded or when we need to readjust what we're doing. So that would be my plea, I guess.
And if I can just follow up on your comments about housing and community development, that I know in the time that I've been coming down to this building, the department that has had the potential for the most work to be thrown at it, and in many cases, the most work thrown at it, is that department. And I've heard from staff over fifteen, for seventeen years before I was on the council, that, gee, what the council is always doing is adding one more goal, but nothing falls out the bottom. And so I always try and keep that in mind, yet I know that what we come up with tends to go to your shop a lot, so I appreciate the juggling act. And if we, if we add something that becomes a burden, please scream. And if I can just suggest that, speaking for myself, I would rather not put pieces of paper on the wall and throw words on them for a long period of time. I'd rather try and go at it kind of top-down from the broad pieces, and if we have to get specific, then we do, but I don't want to start with all the specifics and not have a framework to hang on. So, other comments? Terry and then Colleen.
I was just going to restate what Councilmember Clay had said before. I think the process is that we should finalize our budget format, and then I'll back off of this throwing paper, words on the paper on an easel, but I think a facilitated discussion to define the different things that, different ideas that people have, the wish lists that people have, and then divide those up and really identify what are the goals that we're talking about, and then prioritize those so we can pick the four or five that Barb can use for direction for the next year or two, depending on which we decide.
Colleen?
Two comments. I guess there are things that I would want support from the staff for, for the next conversation, and one of them is, Ruben's comment actually reminded me of it, and that is that if we decided to do more youth activities in the recreation department and fewer senior activities, well, we have like a senior coordinator and we have, I don't know, twenty staff involved in youth recreation. But if we decided to go the other direction and we were going to try to do that much with seniors and eliminate the youth program, which is not going to happen, but if you went that direction, I mean, that would be a major staff shift. And so I guess some of what we're going to want back from you is, are the categories of priorities and the kind of amount of, your reading of the sense of how much we want done in that area, does it fit our existing staffing or not, which you usually tell us to some extent, but just, I don't see that we're going in a lot of different directions than what we have existing staff for, but that's one component. And then I guess the other thing is that what you just said to me is, what you just said is different than what I've been hearing you say, and I certainly would not want to go in the direction of not providing enough specific information about the specific activities and the specific ways in which people have told us and in which we support various goals being achieved, if that's what you're looking for feeding into the work plan, although I was hearing that you wanted less of that from us. So if at any time you feel as though we have not given enough suggestions about the various ways to accomplish the many goals that we would like to see achieved, please let us know, because I'm sure we all have an avalanche of suggestions. But maybe something about defining what that balance is, what you're really looking for, because what you just said is different than what I heard you say before.
Oh, yeah, and please let me clarify then, Councilmember Clay. No, I mean, I think I, I'll try to think of an example, and I think Councilmember Sniffer and I were chatting a little bit after Monday night's meeting, and I think one of the examples that I used for him is, you know, and it wasn't, didn't come from the council, but I certainly know that this community, this council has always been concerned about our responsiveness to the diversity of our community. One of the goals that I have given several of the department heads probably in the last year or so in their specific areas was to try to expand the diversity of our programming, and that's very broad-based, not only in terms of perhaps Spanish language programming, but in other areas. That's the type of thing where if the council had a sense from your constituencies that maybe we weren't doing enough in that area, then I think you can maybe define it as diverse programming. What I'd like to be able to do, and as I think I told Councilmember Sniffer, when I go into those department heads, I have not said, you need to do A, B, C, D, because they are certainly the ones who are much more familiar with their customers, with their patrons, and intricately in their respective areas have the technical expertise that I don't. But I guess my comment to Councilmember Sniffer when we were kind of kicking this around, if I don't feel that necessarily I have the expertise in those areas to be being that directive with a department head, and I don't want to siphon their creativity, then I guess I would ask the council to sort of, in this example, set the broad goal of increase the diversity of our programming, or we're not doing enough to reach out to, you know, the Ethiopian segment of our community, for example. But I'd like, I think it should be somewhat left to me and to the staff to have the creativity to figure out maybe what's the best way to do that. Certainly reporting back to the council, having some indicators of whether or not we've succeeded, but I guess if that answers your question, Councilmember Clay, that's sort of, I guess, what I would like to see in terms of the dynamic in play. Does that help at all?
Yeah, but I mean, it does beg the question too, so if somebody says, increase the diversity of your programming, and they meant Ethiopians, and you increased your outreach to the Russian community, so I guess we'll have to, at some level, we're going to have to, I think, maybe not put things into such a specific language so it's in concrete, but be able to communicate to you what it is that we're talking about, so we don't come to the evaluation. And I'm upset because I didn't get the right kind of streetlights on my street because I didn't communicate that desire. And you met the goals as they were stated, but, you know what I'm saying? So, I mean, we have to have some flexibility in conversation and talk a lot, as the mayor said earlier, so there's good communication, we understand.
Well, I agree, and I think also as the elected representatives awards, certainly, you know, we interface with the community in a certain way, but so do you, and I think it is important that I get your perspective and I guess the feedback you're getting from your respective constituents.
One or two quick comments, that little buzzer was nine-thirty. I saw Dan's hand. With motion of a small...
Yeah, this is the, I will pick only less than twenty seconds indicator. There's a, there's something called policy governance at corporate and nonprofit level where the board sets policy and the staff carries out that policy. And to my mind, that's what we need to do here.
Agreed. Doug?
Yes, very briefly. Certainly, I've never thought of us as a sort of oracular entity sitting up here like, you know, the gods of, Greek gods hurling thunderbolts of wisdom down on people. I think that, you know, it needs to be a dialogue always, and I think, you know, in the past, the council has not always listened to the staff as it should, and we really have to have this dialogue all the way through this process, or else it isn't going to work. And lastly, I do think we have some very important documents in front of us here for our next step. One of them is, you know, the pillars that Bruce has set forth here that have nicely incorporated what the city staff has done, these sort of six pillars of our house, or five of them. And then the document that the city staff put together, lots of worthwhile activities that clearly are coming from their understanding of where the council is headed and what our clients, customers, and fellow citizens are asking for. And then finally, we can't go wrong if we adhere to the city survey summary. You know, that's a great place for goal-setting, and then the discreet activities that will support those goals should come, you know, fairly easily, plus the other things that we've been hearing from other people. These aren't the only two sources, obviously, but I think we're actually a lot closer to coming up with a very workable document than we might have thought at the beginning of the session. Mayor?
Yep. I can just say that the city manager and I will work out a schedule to come back to this. Any thoughts that you all want to communicate in the meantime, I guess email to all of us or the city manager or however you see fit, and we'll come back with some next steps, and if it seems that doing it on a Monday night isn't going to work, we'll pull for probably another Thursday evening, but hopefully we can work it into Mondays.
And hopefully you'll feel better by then.
Yes.
Yeah, get better, Bruce.
And we're done. Great. Thank you, Lani, for the tea.